Call the city council to evening. Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, June 21st. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are 34 items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes, the city council meeting June 14th, 2021.
Counselor Tenera.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is approved 11-0, or filed 11-0. Agenda item number two.
Council President Ossing having Mayor Vision provide an update to the city council regarding COVID-19.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members, thank you very much. So, we're getting through the process here. We've had 4,814 cases since the beginning, and as of today, we have six active cases in the city. So that's very good news. My guess is that number could fluctuate up and down a little bit if you catch a family that hasn't been vaccinated or doesn't want to get vaccinated. You know, that could easily double and then go right back down. But it is good news, and we've hovered around five or six now for a couple of weeks. Last week, we gave 965, or the hospital gave 965 doses, just the hospital, not the other pharmacies or anything. They also went into the high school and the middle school to give the second doses to our students. So that was great, and I want to thank Marlboro Hospital for doing that for us. Of the 965, 742 of them were Marlboro residents. And, let's see, according to the state website, which again, I think is a little low, 57% of our residents are fully vaccinated, and 67% have had at least one dose. So again, we're moving along in that respect. And again, we should hopefully plateau around the 70% number, but that's probably going to be just about it. Interesting, some of our younger residents have been doing a pretty good job in getting vaccinated, so we're at about 51% for the 20 and 29-year-olds. And the younger kids are just under 50% at this point, the 12 to 19s. Reminder, the hospital will be closing the clinic at the Marriott on June 30th, so next week they'll be closing it down. Anyone can go up there between now and then, no appointment necessary. And if they've had a first dose or get a first dose before the 30th, they can go get their second dose at one of the pharmacies or at Hanaford. They can go to Walgreens, CVS, Buvier's Pharmacy, and also Hanaford. And we'll be getting some flyers out to let people know about that in different languages. Also, a reminder on the testing, that the hospital is currently doing testing Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays, 9:00 to noon. They're only averaging about 50 tests a day at this point, 50 to 70 tests a day. And it's really because of people wanting to do traveling or going on trips and coming back and wanting to get tested. So their contract runs through September 30th of this year. So they will be doing testing up there, but they will not be doing any more vaccinations up there after the 30th. They'll be doing patients, and so some of the private physicians have some doses, but my recommendation to everyone is, or to all of you, to recommend to everyone is to go to one of the pharmacies. Buvier's always welcoming people up there. So with that, Mr. President, I'll open up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Questions for the mayor. Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are questions, but also thanks. I'd like to thank you, the local Board of Health, Marlboro Hospital, critical to us, Buvier Pharmacy, CVS, and Walgreens. It takes a team, and the mayor and I knew that we had a minimal discussion, and down the road, it'll be nice, and you don't have to answer this question right now, but there's going to be always the need for that training and keeping that connection. So my request is that those connections stay strong, because the Board of Health is responsible for mass vaccination. A little different from this. Mass vaccination is two days. Everyone in the city has to be vaccinated. Two days for terrorism. And they do train for it. I trained for it. So again, that's why those partners I want to thank, and I'm glad they got to know each other a little. I'm not glad about COVID, worst thing in the world, in my view, but I'm glad they're interacting, and I presume, Mr. Mayor, they'll continue to interact with bioterrorism, anthrax-type training. Is that something that's in the works?
I'm sure that once this is a little farther behind us, we'll be following up and doing kind of a debrief on the whole thing, what we could have done a little bit better, what worked pretty well. We have an ongoing relationship with Marlboro Hospital, so that's nothing new, but they really stepped up to the plate. Buvier Pharmacy, maybe we can do a better job in our connections with Walgreens and CVS. But all their directive came from the feds, so it was difficult to stick our nose in there. We're just very thankful that, again, the Edward M. Kennedy Health Center came through for us for some vaccines, and we were able to do what we did over the last couple of months up at the Marriott.
Well, and those quick actions are appreciated. And again, thank you for your answer to the future training. Again, it's so important. We were fortunate to have the time, because the vaccine couldn't be distributed for the two-day vaccination. And just so I say Marlboro, if it was in the whole state, every city and town has to vaccinate within two days for, say, anthrax. So Marlboro's on their own at that point, and that's where those partners are going to be grateful. I hope you do challenge the CVSs and the Walgreens. I know Buvier has reached out to me as well for a homebound, and they're very community-oriented, but I'm hoping they'll be partners in the future if we ever have to go, unfortunately, down that route. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, counsel. I mean, John Gossett and his team down in the Health Department did a phenomenal job, so. Other questions?
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Anything else for the mayor? Anything else for the mayor? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. Again, thanks you very much for helping us get through this other side of the pandemic. But you were talking about the testing. Where is the testing available?
Up through the 30th, it'll be still available at the Marriott. They can walk in at the Marriott. After that point, they'll be closing the Marriott operation down. It will be available at Hanaford, CVS, Walgreens, and Buvier's.
Okay, so basically, your local pharmacies?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, counsel. This has been great, it really has, to give you this update and I think clarify a lot of questions, so thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three.
Now's the time for the public hearing on the application for special permit from Attorney Michael Brangwin on behalf of Raising Cane's Restaurant LLC to construct and operate a restaurant with two drive-through service lanes on the site at 141 Boston Post Road West, Order Number 21-108307. And in addition, we have communication from Attorney Michael Brangwin regarding a request for continuance of the public hearing on the application for special permit on behalf of Raising Cane's Restaurants. And a second communication from Attorney Brangwin, letter was sent to the abutters informing them of the request of continuance of the public hearing.
We will open the public hearing for the purposes this evening to start the public hearing process, but seeing that the applicant wants to continue to July 19th, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to July 19th.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to continue the public hearing until July 19th. So anyone that wants to participate, the next date will be July 19th for this public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Public hearing is continued until July 19th unanimously, 11-0. Agenda Item Four.
Now's the time for the public hearing of the proposed amendment to the zoning code, Chapter 650, by adding a new section to create the commercial village overlay district, Order Number 21-108293.
This public hearing will be conducted in four stages. The public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, questions, or public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city councilors. I will ask any member that's speaking to please state their name and address for the record, and we'll start with the first part of the public hearing, which is those speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. If you want to, whichever one you'd like. Attorney Buckley. We get a quick tutorial here on the clicker.
Just have to point it in my general direction, that's all. Okay? Okay. Go ahead and take that.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, for the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Broadstein. I have with me this evening Scott Weiss, spokesperson for the applicant. This is a continuation of a project that was before the council about four years ago and ultimately was withdrawn for a number of reasons. At the time, the city was going through an analysis of its housing plan. There was the Great Recession, then there was the COVID situation. But we, given the market conditions, what we see coming out of the state in terms of the Housing Choice Initiative and other initiatives that other communities are engaging in to try to provide diversity of housing, we thought that we would come before the council for this zoning change. Currently, under your ordinance, there's no way to do what we're proposing. We do think it has social as well as economic merit for the city. We will go through a brief presentation to show the council and those interested what these benefits are. We feel that this is a needed alternative. We're targeting this for those individuals that perhaps want to downsize and stay in the city and yet continue to own property. I'd like to just emphasize that, and I use this expression downstairs at the planning board, what we're seeking is the key to open the door to allow us to proceed through the zoning change. There is not a project at this point before the city. This is the enabling legislation that would allow us to proceed. But what we're going to show you is how we envision it, and that would be the culmination, hopefully, of working together with the city to put controls in place to ensure that what you see is what you get. And so I just, you know, there seems to be some confusion in some municipalities that have done this, that what is being shown is necessarily the final product. With that, given your schedule, I'll turn it over to Scott, who will take the council through the presentation.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, counsel, council president, councilors, for having me here. Again, for the record, my name is Scott Weiss with the Gutierrez Company. The one thing I'm not sure about is how, oh, it's already up, so there we go. Yeah. So thank you very much for having me tonight. As Bob said, this proposal has been put forward several years ago and was something that was viewed by a party that was interested in purchasing the land from us. Since that time, as I recall or understand, the proposal was withdrawn or not viewed favorably, and it didn't go anywhere, and we have COVID, and a lot of time has passed. We're bringing it forward to you tonight again because we think it has merit. We think it has merit to the city. We think it has merit to the neighbors that abut to a couple of sides of the project. And so want to give you a quick overview of the land, the proposal, and where we think the benefits lie as we go through this. So just quickly, I'll give you some background and some history of the project and where we are, and the commercial village overlay district, or the commercial village housing overlay district, as we call it, why it works for the neighbors, why we think it works for the city. And won't be long, I think I have 11 slides, and we're already on three, so it won't be that long. Just a little bit of the history. This started back in mid-2000s, where the property was approved for a single-family home subdivision. Work started on the site by a partner with the Gutierrez Company. It was before my time with the company, but work started, they ran into some runoff problems and some siltation going into some neighboring properties, perhaps some of you recall, some may remember, and the work was shut down. And they had to get some erosion controls in place and get some things in place to remediate that work. After that, it was sort of the end of '07 or into '08, and the market was falling apart, and so the partner that we had at that time left and bailed and did not want to proceed. So the project went through some downtime. There was an interest, obviously, in housing for quite some time. We tried to extend or maintain the subdivision approvals in place through that period. The site was maintained as in its current condition. It is on the tail end of the neighborhood, adjacent to Ames and Forest Street, where the commercial sector of the city lies. And so the neighbors across the street are Marlboro Hills and Joe Zink's property and Marlboro Technology Park as well. So we extended the subdivision. We sought additional partners, the Gutierrez Companies. Our bread and butter is to build commercial office and lab and R&amp;D-type space as well. We're not single-family home builders, admittedly, so we would partner with somebody to deliver this project. Since that time, we did have an interested party come forward to us and want to build an age-targeted type facility, which would be geared towards mostly empty nesters, it's elevated buildings, it's parking underneath, there are two-bedroom units. There aren't other amenities like clubhouses and playgrounds and pools, and it is owner-based, so is owner-occupied typically, and creates a different type of housing product than the rental apartments you might find elsewhere. Not that it doesn't exist at all, but it doesn't exist in larger quantities for those people who may be wanting to downsize or leave their existing home. Last year, we did have a new subdivision reapproved. It's now 21 lots. There are some soil management requirements to basically clear-cut the site and to consolidate some of the soil on the property. And then, of course, we have the COVID pandemic, and the interest in by home builders was limited, and we do have this continued interest for this type of condominium, age-targeted condominium project. Just as an overview, it's 10.6 acres. It is, I'm not sure if this will show up on the screen, apparently not. So it is 10.6 acres. It does abut an existing San Dimey, Teller, McKay Drive neighborhood to the north and east, but around about 2/3 of the area, it is all the commercial industrial Resultsway Overlay District. It's all the commercial property. As part of the subdivision review, the interest was to keep the access entirely out of the existing neighborhood, so it's already been somewhat separated, if you will, from the existing neighborhood. And as an overview of the project itself, as it's envisioned here, is it would be a special permit by the city council, and it would require a master plan be approved and then go forward. So this is just the zoning rules to establish how we would proceed, and then we would come forward with the detailed project, which would include a development agreement. As we mentioned, the age-targeted multifamily housing, which would consolidate and eliminate just going from a single-family subdivision where the entirety of the land is used to pulling the land, the development forward away from the residential neighborhood and putting it towards the commercial streets and keeping it further away so that we create a bigger buffer to the neighbors, which was something that ended up resulting in some of those stormwater issues when the area was being first developed. The property is somewhat of a hill. In the center of the site, there is the highest elevation, so as you go to the north and east towards the existing neighborhood, it does drop off down to the existing homes. And as you come back towards Ames and Forest Street, it also drops off from that high point. The idea is to put most of the development in these buildings on the downside of the hill from the neighborhood, on the opposite side of the hill from the neighborhood, so that we create a buffer to help preserve some of that area for the neighbors as we go through. And as we've envisioned this, as you probably are well aware, the state has gone forward with trying to generate and promote housing in the state, and I know the city has done a lot of good work in advancing and developing housing, this provides a little bit of a different opportunity, again, with the age-targeted, the condominium approach, where it provides a different choice, and it would be compliant, the site would be and could be compliant with the state's housing choice regulations, therefore providing the city some resources and access to resources in the future, whether it be MassWorks grants or one-stop applications and things like that as we go forward. Oops, too many there. As we mentioned, from the neighborhood perspective, it does keep and create a buffer, which obviously at the longest point is over 500 feet, but creates an existing amount of land that would be left preserved with existing vegetation. At the top of the hill, we could increase the berm, we could replant that with some more evergreens and other trees so that we can further screen the area, and that would help protect that neighborhood and put this new housing closer to the roads of Ames and Forest Street and the commercial side of the property. It also, one additional piece, just the council may not be as familiar with, going back to the subdivision itself, there is an existing home on Forest Street that's there today. Just to the bottom of the plan, there is an existing home that exists today, and they've stored some tractor trailers and some other things of that nature. And by going forward with this project, it would be incorporated into the development and allows us to clean up that area and incorporate it with the entirety of the project. And it would keep all of the activity on Ames and Forest and away from and out of the neighborhood. From, it's a little slow sometimes. Just one of the things that we had the architect look at is just a massing diagram to see what the views, and you have some copies of this that were handed out and distributed as well. The view on the left side of the screen shows the single-family homes from the perspective of where that arrow is for A, and it shows that when those are built, again, the land will be cleared, the homes will be built, and they will be backing up to the existing homes, as you would expect. On the right side of the screen is the perspective and the view of where the buildings would be down, again, across over the hill, on the other side of the hill, so they're going to be far less visible, and that does not include the addition of any new plantings, which would obviously be part of the program. They'd be required, they'd be included as we go forward. So we did provide a couple of different views from different locations, all showing that, again, it keeps the buildings further away, provides a much greater buffer to the neighbors, which will protect them from a visibility, from an activity perspective, and also from a drainage point of view as well. Again, just another view from another perspective from the adjacent neighborhood. From the city perspective, as Attorney Buckley mentioned previously, there was a lot that happened. The city, and I'm not sure to the extent, the council may have authorized some of these studies by MAPC, by a private consultant, evaluating housing options and needs within the city and providing some recommendations. This approach provides a transition space from that existing neighborhood, provides a buffer, and helps transition to the more commercial neighborhood. The existing subdivision that is approved there just puts a new residential neighborhood in the midst of the commercial neighborhood, because the access is only from the commercial streets. This revised proposal will provide a larger net tax benefit to the city, and this approach has a smaller footprint, leaves less land, has less land affected, and leaves more land unchanged and in its current state. And then, as mentioned before, it would satisfy the housing choice. What we've put forward to you is very similar, not exactly the same, but very similar to what was proposed by our interested partner from several years ago. What we want to do is put this forward, put this out to you, get some feedback, and identify and refine it so that it's something that can be very successful for the city as well as for the adjacent neighborhood. So that's the intent here, so that we can work with you and look forward to working through this in urban affairs and moving forward with the proposal. With that, I will turn it back.
Thank you. Mr. President, entertain any questions you may have.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buckley, Mr. Weiss. Are there any other public speaking in favor of the zoning amendment? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Any members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Is there any public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Couple of questions. First, how many units? Ballpark?
Roughly between 110, 120 in total.
Okay, thank you. The other questions I have, like in Slides 7 and 8, is very good renderings as far as what, you know, the different perspectives are, but I found interesting is there seems to be a hill disappearing. The houses are on a hill, there's no hill in the other picture. So if you want to go to Slide 7, it's pretty obvious.
See if I can get this right.
Yeah, that's close, that shows it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, 8.
Yep.
Yeah, you see the houses on the top of the hill.
Right.
There's no hill on the other.
So there's a couple of things. One, as part of the single-family home development, because of the hill and the rise in the road that would get there, a lot of that area is going to end up being regraded and have to be pushed. That soil, the land, the earthwork is going to have to be pushed so that it levels out the hill a little bit and pushes it a little bit closer to some of the residents. So that's a little bit of what's going on there. And frankly, I actually asked the architect not to represent the hill entirely on the condominium version, because then you would see nothing. So there is the opportunity to create and expand the berm and to have it up a little bit higher at this location, for example, but then you would see nothing, and you'd accuse me of hiding everything. But it would be less visible, because you would berm it up and plant it beyond what you see here.
Sure, I thought you were hiding a hill. But yeah, so, no, it's an interesting approach. Is it electric, gas? Have you gone that far yet?
We have not. We have not designed the buildings or specified. Again, we want to work with the city council and the city to come up with something that makes sense.
I appreciate the engagement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Counsel Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. What do you, what's your general plan for how much one of these units would sell for?
Again, we haven't priced anything as of yet, so we don't have a number in mind. I'd be guessing at the moment.
I mean, my question is, because a lot of the change, the recent change in the law and the vision is there's more of a, there's a need for a law and the vision is there's more of a, there's a need for affordable housing, and these look very high-end. So I was just, I didn't know if you had a ballpark figure in order, in order to make this a viable project. Are we talking, no, you wouldn't even.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't know as of, as of yet. We are aware of the city's affordable policy, affordability policy, and would want to comply with the city's requirements on that, on that front.
Thank you, Council Wagner. Council Tenera.
Yes, when you say age-targeted, is that like an over 55 community? What's your plan there?
The, I think that if you had to articulate an age, it would probably be 62. But age-targeted is, is in compliance with the Fair Housing Act. What you're trying to do is design a unit or units that appeal to a certain demographic or market. And as you notice, it's, it's not amenity-loaded, you don't have pools, tennis courts, and all the things that someone with a, a family may want. But there is a need for that type of housing. You, you could go to surrounding communities and you'll see that this is probably one of the trends that's being developed.
Right. And I'm glad it's a condominium, at least where people get invested in town, because a lot of times we have so many apartments. You know, they're transient, they come in and out. At least if they own, they stay, they take care of the property and they're invested in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tenera. Council Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, I'm pleased that it could be condos. Just one, couple of questions. You showed in one slide that the closest resident house is 500 feet away. I'm just curious if we could go back to that slide and see what the distance would be from your, your unit on the right into Sandini, and the same thing on the other end, from the unit on the left, the last unit, to Glen Street. Do you have any idea? Approximately, we, we know this, we see the 500, I'm not surprised with that.
Sure, sure. You're right. On, on either end of those areas, there would be probably a minimum of 50 to 100 feet of distance between the property line and the buildings.
50 would be better than, 100 would be better than 50.
And again, we're, we're certainly open, this is, admittedly, this is our opening salvo. This is a plan, if, if you saw the plan from several years ago, it had the buildings far more pushed into the property and left rooms for some other amenity space and retail and other things. We've tried to consolidate that and pull it further away. Certainly we're willing to work with the council and the, and the neighbors to, to identify how to push and where to pull and, and move the buildings that would be most amenable.
Just one more thing, Mr. President. I, I like the idea that there's one entrance on Forest Street, you know, and then there's, there's one on Ames. I mean, that's, that's not bad. You need two, and those are, that's probably the ideal setup. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Landers. Anyone else? Council Orm.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions. So you've indicated, if you look at the multi-use, that it would be a maximum of 120 units. Have you looked at, you mentioned underground parking. Have you looked at what that would be at?
I believe this shows a parking under the building.
I mean, I know it's only a zoning issue right now we're looking at, but since you presented this, I might as well ask the question.
Sure. So this, the zoning approach was up to 120 units. If you were to go over it, we'd have to come back to the city council and ask for additional permission beyond that. But this plan is roughly about 100, 110, and show, and relies on parking under each building. And the parking out front is really just the overflow, if you will, or visitor parking, that, that type of space.
So 120 parking spaces or 240?
So it is, it is probably about 180 to 200 total parking spaces, a little bit more than one and a half per unit.
And then another question, because, you know, the slides kind of showed what it may look like one way or the other. Have you reached out to those neighbors?
So not recently, admittedly, not recently, to communicate directly. This property does have a pretty long history with the subdivision approval and the start and stop of construction in the past. So there has been prior communication with the neighbors about this, this project.
And I know we talked about, depending on what side you're on, you know, you could be closer, you could be within 50 to 100 feet. Have you, well, I know you haven't, but balloon tests really help with the height of the building, because your picture shows no hill. But I'd like to see a balloon in the background of that same picture where the height of the building would be, if you know what I'm trying to say. You compared single-family to these units here. It'd be nice to see a balloon up in the air somewhere at the height of these buildings, at the 50 to 100-foot closest distance to the furthest distance. Just to, it'd be a visual that is important to me.
Sure.
Again, we're here for a zoning change, I understand, but that, I think, concerned me that I really haven't seen a practical picture of what that top of that building would be at. And I'm looking out my back door. Might it be 50 to 100 feet from the, one of the buildings or the furthest 500? Be nice to see that. Again, for, for your thought. But most importantly, I think it'd be good for the neighbors. And the other question I had is, I've been at a, recently I was in Whalen, and I was going through a, I think it was an old rectory. And what they did is, and we have them in Marlboro too, they put in a mixed use of single and multi. So they, you know, so you graduate as you move along. You can go from your single-family unit, which is a condominium, part of the whole property, to a multi-unit, right up to a nursing home. I don't know if that ever was thought out as well, as like a multi-level type of housing. Just curious.
Mr. President, so that, that hasn't directly been thought of on this. It's, this proposal is sort of incorporated into the larger fabric of, of the community out here, where there are some different housing choices in the area, but all on this site. I think this site would actually be a little limited in terms of its ability to provide all those multiple uses in one, on this one property at 10 acres. Certainly not without potentially getting closer to the neighborhood and losing that benefit of that buffer.
I respect that, but you could always remove a building or two, you know. I respect what you're saying, but at the same time, you know, I'm thinking of the neighbors. You know, this is a very major change that we have to decide on. And, you know, the neighbors are my concern as well as every counselor in here. So again, that would be concerning if the attempts aren't made to present a little differently on the top of these buildings to their view. Outside of that, I appreciate your answers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Orm. I just, I'll save you for last, Counselor. Anyone else? Council Dumas.
Thank you. How are you tonight? I appreciate the phone call ahead of time. I just didn't respond because I didn't know what the presentation is going to entail. So we got that late Sunday morning. My question is, or a few concerns, is that, as you said, this is a long-standing relationship between the neighbors and this project. I know that when this went to the planning board by right with the subdivision, a lot of neighbors came out and couldn't really oppose this project or the subdivision because you could do it by right. I think sneaking this through with just a zoning change, it gives me a little concern because they're not notified. And I think that, I emailed my few constituents, and I have email addresses with a prior presentation that you had provided me earlier in the year, late Saturday night. So I don't think it was enough notification as to why a lot of people aren't here regarding the public hearing. So hopefully, a neighborhood outreach could be, could happen. My concern is with Glen Street. There is already drainage issues. I just had a constituent actually randomly on Thursday night told me I had to spend $1,000 just to move a shed due to flooding already. And it's actually closer to the Glen Street side, so that building to the left is pretty concerning. This is a big hill. And I'm concerned, and as you mentioned way back when you started, there was a lot of damage within the neighborhood initially when you first started the subdivision. I wasn't aware of that because I was not on the council, but I got numerous phone calls once this subdivision went back to the planning board. And I'm not saying this to have negative impact, I just want the fellow councilors to know all the facts of this project, and it is Ward III. You all can decide whether you're for it or not. But my concern is the drainage issue in this area. It is a pretty big slope. The size of the project is pretty large. Again, the fire station is a concern. Apex is on the other side. This neighborhood has been through a lot. Again, U.S. councilors can make your informed decision. I'm not trying to sway you positively or negatively. I'm just saying that there are a lot of concerns. My last question to you is that by right on Part B, consumer services and retail establishment accessory and complimere to the other principal uses at the property, I would like to know what that entails during urban affairs. I think it's very vague, especially because you're trying to do a targeted age demographic. So what does that mean in regards to the actual accessory and complimere to that age specific? Also, I'm concerned that discrimination-wise, how do you plan on targeting and marketing that age description? I don't want that to fall onto you, because I don't want you to be sued for discrimination, since it's not directly a 55 and older overlay district. So that is a concern for you, not necessarily for us, because once you say that you're doing age-specific, we in turn are going by that word, and you can't legally rent to someone based upon age unless it's specific 55 and older. And I could be wrong about that, so check your sources. Other than that, I think I will leave the rest for Urban. I'm sure Council Roby has quite a few things to say. So thank you for your time.
Do you want to respond?
Mr. President, I, I agree. You're, you're absolutely right. When it comes to drainage, that's probably one of the largest concerns. And that's how we developed and advanced some of the prior look at this, at this project and this site, is to move the buildings away to help reduce that, that drainage issue and, and not participate, if you will, in those, in those problems. And as you mentioned, there, there is a hill out there today, and we're trying to keep the development on the, on the opposite side of the hill from, from the existing homes. So I think that's an important thing. And you're right about the age-targeted. It, it doesn't say if somebody comes in that doesn't meet the targeted age group that you would ever not sell to those people. But being that it's an ownership project, being that the type of building that's proposed here, again, elevator, parking under, two-bedroom units, not, 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 no extra amenity space like clubhouses and pools and gyms and that type of thing, it tends to appeal to, to an older, empty-nester demographic, because it's not starter home, it's not rental when you're starting out, it's not young-family type space. It, it just tends to appeal to a certain age demographic. And the city, by, by providing this, provides a different opportunity than some of the other space that's, that's available. And then we welcome the opportunity to, to follow up. It has been an odd time reaching out to neighbors and the like, and to do so through a phone call or an email and not have the opportunity to meet. And hopefully, those, those opportunities are now presented and available. So thank you.
Can I run?
Council Dumas.
I'm not 62, and I would jump at the chance to afford, buy one of these condos, be the way the market is now. If I can get an offer, an accepted offer, sign me up all day. So just keep, just keep that in mind, you know, I, and I would, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Council Dumas. Council Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. For you to the applicant, I wanted to kind of follow up on a couple of questions. I appreciate the presentation and to share the concerns of the density of this project added on to a neighborhood that's already experiencing a lot of traffic concerns. And so I was curious with the plan that you have currently, why the number of buildings or the rough idea of how many units was selected, as well as have you been thinking about traffic when you're assessing the density of these multifamily
So, so this is where the proposal was before, and it was really identified based on the layout of the property. The general traffic terms, and full disclaimer, I was in a practicing traffic engineer. So the, the comparative traffic for the two sites is, this would, or two development proposals, the single-family versus this proposal, are not extremely dissimilar because a single-family home generates more traffic, because you're usually family-based and multiple trips, than, than a, this type of two-bedroom condominium-type unit would typically experience. So the numbers are not wildly dissimilar. This is clearly somewhat higher, and that we can certainly talk about how to bring those more in, in line.
Okay. And can you explain a little bit more about that existing house property you mentioned? I know that was in passing, that there was a home there, and that's not a background I'm familiar with, but is that something that you, you all own and then would be incorporated into this design?
So we, we do not own it. And it is an existing home that's there today. We have previously had conversations about acquiring the property pre-COVID, and those have fallen by the wayside with some of the prior discussions. And if this was something appealing to the city council, then we would reengage.
Okay. No, that's helpful information. And I guess the last point I wanted to make regarding, and I know it's not on this slide, but I know, I think in the zoning specifically, you mentioned like open space, whether it was left natural. Is that something you could explain a little bit more about what you all are thinking so far?
Certainly. So similar question from the planning board as well. Obviously, there's a large area of the site. You know, if it's 10 acres, it's not quite half, maybe four acres plus or minus of the site that, that's not being developed. And we would work with the city in terms of how to preserve that as open space so that it would not be available for development in the future.
Yeah, because my concern would be that if this were to move forward, that there would be a continuation of development. I'm sure when that initial neighborhood was designed, you know, it was thought that that might be where it ended. And it's just a lot of, as Counsel Dumas mentioned, a lot of development in this particular area. And without a fire station and other things, I'd be concerned about having that much density in one area. Thank you.
The other councilors. Councilor Roby.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is supposed to be questions from the council, but I would ask your indulgence to make a few points before I ask my questions. So to follow up with a couple of comments, the planning board did approve a subdivision for this property. They worked very hard with the developer and with the planning board and engineering to create a development that fit what the residents of that housing development behind Richer School wanted. Because when they had done some other construction, they caused major issues for housing. So there is a currently-approved housing development. My guess is if we approve this zoning change, they want these buildings. The order specifically says that they can have additional units by a special permit. But my bet is the planning board would never approve single-family housing if they reneged on the single-family housing that they currently have. So as was mentioned, this is not a, a retirement village overlay. They're calling it a commercial village housing overlay. And as also was mentioned, they cannot restrict the residents in the building. So they can advertise as much as they want, but if I am 25 years old and have a child and I want to live there, they can't refuse me rental or ownership. It's condominium, so it would be owned. I guess the specific questions I have are also, I just wanted to point out, this was before the city council in January of 2018. It went to the planning board. Both groups had a public hearing. The planning board sent a negative recommendation to this body with a list of why they did that negative recommendation. The city council did not, as far as I know, this was not withdrawn. The city council's urban affairs chairman at the time just never took it up. So it died by lack of a meeting. So that's not going to happen this time. We will take it up, and there will be some discussion. However, I guess the language indeed that you have, exclusivity control, talks about uses and provisions of Article 5, Chapter 650 relating to underlying zoning district not otherwise impacted by this section, shall continue in full force. And you mentioned 65033. So 65033 in 2018, when this was first submitted, was not a use in the code. 65033 is now the results way mixed-use overlay district. So I'm not sure if the use in that paragraph is So I'm not sure if the use in that paragraph is appropriate, so we can talk about that at Urban Affairs. You also talk about eligible uses. And as you pointed out, the area is currently zoned A3. So in our code, we have multiple types of residential, and you list them all, A1, A2, A3, RB, RC, and RCR. Each one of them have in the table of uses some specificity as to what's allowed. They are not all identical. You, however, want us to be able to use all the uses in all the residential districts in this overlay, and I think I have a problem with that. And I guess I would question why you're calling it a commercial village housing overlay when restaurants aren't allowed and retail sales either under 75,000 square feet or over 75,000 square feet are not allowed in A3. The only thing I could see that you might want to put in there, considering how you're selling this, is a medical office or a dental clinic. Multifamily dwelling isn't allowed except by special permit in RB, and this is A3. So I'm reminding you all that it's nice to see some pictures. We get a little ahead of ourselves sometimes. What we need to focus on in Urban Affairs is the actual zoning changes. And I saw the Chair of Planning Board, did she come down with a letter or did she? If I could find out if there is an actual recommendation, if I could suspend to accept and place it on file?
Counsel Dusset, do you have some information?
Yes. While you were talking, the Planning Board, Babson, just said in my ear that they did not approve it as a verbal. They don't have it on paper. But, you know, that was the verbal response to what results of the Planning Board.
All right. So I know that we would typically not take this up in Urban Affairs until we had the Planning Board's recommendation. I would really like to go ahead and start on the discussion, especially since we have a verbal from them. I believe we have a Council Urban Affairs Committee meeting set, so we'll find out if it fits their schedule. And we will take this up and continue the discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Is there any other discussion? Any other questions from the councilors? Any questions from the councilors? Counsel Roby.
I'm sorry, I forgot one of my questions. And again, we can have this discussion in Urban Affairs. You talked about this as being housing choice eligible, and I guess that throws me because my understanding of housing choice is workforce development housing, housing for people to have to be able to be near jobs and/or, if not near the job, to at least have it, and also affordable. So I guess I would look for more explanation of how exactly this fits into housing choice, and I would like to have the solicitor give us a ruling that this specific change would not require a, would still require a two-thirds vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Any other questions? Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be remiss if I didn't ask this question. So I believe, and I would like clarification if you don't mind, you do not have any type of purchase and sale agreement for that parcel of land or have not communicated your interest to purchase that parcel of land, that you would need to start that one building on the far my right, correct?
Not currently.
Follow-up. If that does not go through, this rendering would obviously change dramatically, correct?
That's correct. It would.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas. Are there any other questions from the councilors? Any questions from the councilors? Any questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing, and the entire public hearing in this zoning change is in Urban Affairs. Mr. Buckley, Mr. Weiss, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance and the amount of $7,500 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council to assist the Marlboro Downtown Village District, Cultural District, excuse me, with the overall cost of the food truck festival and support the local artisans with interactive exhibits.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Director Harris and the MEDC team. I think this is going to be a wonderful event. Looking forward to it. Motion to approve the grant.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Grant is approved 11-0. Agenda item six.
Communication from the mayor regarding notification of 60-day appointment of Patrick Jones's interim tax collector effective June 25, 2021 at 5:01 PM.
Counsel Irish or Counsel Dumas?
I'll take it. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file a communication from the mayor. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is filed 11 in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of William Fowler to the Planning Board for a five-year term to expire on February 2, 2026.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you. Motion to move to personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is forwarded to Personnel with 11-0 vote. Agenda item eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Marissa Waldman to the Cultural Council for a three-year term from the date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is referred to Personnel 11-0. Agenda item nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of William Dunbar to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term to expire on February 2, 2024.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. And once again, motion to refer to personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. All those opposed, it is referred to Personnel 11-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from the Planning Board regarding a favorable recommendation of the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 to add a new section, 61, temporary moratorium for multifamily housing projects, Order Number 20-100, 8274A.
Counsel Roby.
Mr. President, move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file a correspondence from the Planning Board. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it is filed 11 in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 11.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding a request for approval of a flat wall sign on the south side for IC Federal Credit Union at 160 Apex Drive within the Hospitality and Recreation Mixed Use Overlay District.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. As indicated by Mr. Lippett, this meets all of the sign ordinance code. There is an existing sign already on the building, so my guess is they're changing the design of IC Federal Credit Union. Unless there's a need by this body to feel that they want to ask questions, I would move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sign request. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. All those opposed, the sign request is approved 11-0. Agenda item 12.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding a request for approval of a flat wall sign on the north side for IC Federal Credit Union at 160 Apex Drive within the Hospitality and Recreation Mixed Use Overlay District.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an identical sign, a little smaller, on the opposite side of the building. Again, move to approve the sign.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sign request. Is there any discussion from the councilors? Seeing none, all those in favor. All those opposed, the sign request is approved 11 in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 13.
Communication from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission regarding an application for a keynote license at Ginger Garden, 200 Boston Post Road East.
Anyone want to take it? Accept and place on file would be entertained motion. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file a communication from the Lottery Commission for Ginger Garden's keynote license. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. All those opposed, it is filed 11 in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 14.
Communication from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission regarding installation of a keynote-to-go monitor at two locations, Lakeside Shell at 413 Lakeside Avenue and Marlboro Shell at 431 Lincoln Street.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you. We were all trying to decide who was going to take this. In, let's see, where's my minutes? In May of last, May of 2020, we had a similar item come to the City Council where we had asked to have a letter sent to the Lottery Commission with the objection that keynote-to-go is one thing to have in a little small gasoline station or a little convenience store where they can just grab something and leave. Keynote, to me, is one of those where you're going to sit and you're going to stay and you're going to play and you're going to watch. So our objection to the Seasons Corner Market or our letter was that we didn't object to the keynote-to-go, but we didn't ever want them to have a keynote license. So I would ask that the council approve the president to write a similar letter to the Lottery Commission saying that we object to the keynote at this site. They currently have, I'm sorry, the installation of the keynote-to-go so that it doesn't become a keynote in the future. It's, they're very small gas stations. They don't really have a place for people to be doing this kind of thing.
Just to be clear, the letter would be to say that we disapprove of the keynote monitor from the standpoint of there's no parking and these aren't facilities that people congregate at to watch. They can still have their license to sell it, but it's the monitor that it's what's being applied for here, and that's what the council has looked unfavorably upon in the past.
Right. Well, the letter that was sent in May of 2020 is the City Council's not opposed to keynote-to-go, but at this time would be opposed to an expansion that would permit monitors where patrons remain on the premises that are not designed for patrons to remain at facilities. So I think you have a copy of this letter if you think it's sufficient to just send a similar one, changing the name of the facility to be these two sites.
I am happy to write a letter if that's the wish of the council, which has been consistently that the keynote-to-go monitor is what we don't have not been approving at these facilities that aren't sized, for lack of a better word. They don't have the parking. They don't have the sit-down establishments for the monitors. So in the past, we have written letters stating to that. So that motion's been made and seconded.
Counsel Perlmann.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just wondering if this is going to keep happening, if there should be some written information available for applicants moving forward so they know that we're not favorable to the monitor? I'm just wondering if that's something that the applicants knew ahead of time when they were applying, and something that we should just make apparent in the future.
Well, so our last letters sort of did. We tried to work with the Lottery Commission to tell us who has them, you know, how do they get them? And there's a, the thing that we're fighting is the lottery's pushing them, right? The lottery wants them out there because they know it generates business. So I don't fault them for that. I fault, at least the council in the past has faulted them for the locations for some of them that aren't suited for expanded parking, sit-down establishments. These are gas stations. I mean, nothing wrong with gas stations, but not sure it's a place I want to hang out for any extended period of time, right? Get my gas, buy what I need, and I take off. So, and that's been the, I guess, consensus of the council in pass.
So that would have to be at the state level, then, that they would have to regulate that? Because I'm imagining if there was like an actual square footage cutoff or something, that that could be easier, but that's something that we wouldn't provide. It would have to be at the state?
Yeah, I mean, the state sends these to us. I don't know if it's because applicants request them. I'm not sure how that all unfolds, but, I mean, this is only the third and fourth application that we've had in my tenure here.
Okay. I was just curious because I figured it might happen more and more, and so it might be helpful to have, you know, something ready to go or easy so we can send to applicants.
The letter's all set to go. It's just, I just got to change the address on the letter and to who it goes to, so that's not, that's not hard.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to have the council president send a letter to the Lottery Commission not recommending that monitors be installed at these two locations? Any discussion? All those in favor, the president sending the letter? All those opposed, the letter will be sent and is approved 11 in favor, none opposed. Thank you, councilors. Agenda item 15.
Communications from various residents regarding opposition to the application for site plan review of Woho to construct a mixed-use project within the Marlboro Village District at 28 South Bolton Street, Order Number 21-100, 8277.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communications.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communications. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Orem.
Yes. Just in summary, I'd just like to note, three of these concerns brought up parking, one brought up traffic. Most of all these noted letters, which some of them were well-written, most of them were. They also obviously are concerned about the aesthetics and the architectural version of the building that was shown. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other discussion on the motion to file? All those in favor? This is 11. Motion to file is approved 11 in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 16.
Communication from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project regarding personnel will be in the community responding to residents' concerns about mosquitoes on various states in June and July 2021.
Counsel Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be, Mr. President, I'll be making a motion to accept and place on file. I believe the clerk will have this available on the website. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And they are looking to do routine request. You can call Central Mass Mosquito for the end of June, which is June 30, or the following Thursdays in July, and they'll schedule something with the person calling. For Siren residents that don't want to see aerial spraying, there is a procedure for that, and this does not include that at this time. It would be definitely pre-notification before any of that, in case there's anyone out there that's listening that might be thinking it's for that. This is for individual spraying at the present time or street spraying, which you can opt out if you so wish as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. On the motion to file the correspondence from Central Mass Mosquito, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. All those opposed, it is filed 11 in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 17.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Marlboro Industrial LLC regarding proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 5 and Section 18 by adding hobby vehicle storage as a warehousing use, warehousing use in the limited industrial district.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer this to Urban Affairs and the Planning Board, set a public hearing for July 19, and to advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer the zoning change to Urban Affairs. The Planning Board set a public hearing for July 19 and to advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think the key to this is the definition of a hobby vehicle. So, and I'd rather make sure that that is very clear within the process, whether or not it's something that, you know, is registered, can be registered, can't be registered, you know, issues like that, how many wheels, if any, you know, things like that, but.
An electric bike.
Yeah. They don't need registration, fortunately, but yes, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other discussion, questions on the motion? So on the motion to refer to Urban, send to the Planning Board, set a public hearing for July 19, and to advertise. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is approved to send to the Planning Board, to Urban Affairs, advertise, and set a public hearing for July 19. Item 18.
Application for special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of De Silva Landscaping Inc. to construct and operate a landscaper's yard at the Airport Industrial Park, 685 Farm Road, Unit 17.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to set a public hearing for July 19 and to advertise.
You want it to go to Urban Affairs?
Sorry, I can't even read my own writing. Refer to Urban Affairs.
That's okay. Motion to refer to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing for July 19 and advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved 11-0 to send to Urban, set a public hearing for July 19, and to advertise. Agenda item 19.
Application for special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Laurawal Masonry LLC to construct and operate a contractor's yard at the Airport Industrial Park, 685 Farm Road, Unit 18.
Counsel Roby.
Mr. President, thank you. Move to refer to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing for July 19, and to advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for July 19, and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to send to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing for the 19th of July, and to advertise. set a public hearing for the 19th of July, and to advertise. Agenda item number twenty.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes for Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is approved to file. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item twenty-one.
Claims.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to move the claims, send the claims to Legal Department.
Motion made and seconded to refer the claims to Legal Department. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Claims referred to Legal, eleven in favor, none opposed. Reports of committees. I'm going to start with Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Climate Resiliency Committee will be meeting on June 29th.
Council Resiliency on June 29th. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The City Council Urban Affairs Committee met on Thursday, June 17th. We took up three items on our agenda, sort of. Order Number 21-1008277, the application for site plan review from Attorney Falk on behalf of Woho to construct a mixed-use project within the Marlborough Village zoning district at 28 South Bolton Street, was not taken up at the request of the applicant. Order Number 1721-106800I, application for modification of a special permit by Minor Group LLC to condition Number 20 signage to allow for increased signage at 408 Maple Street for Minneke. The owner of Automax Scorzelli was present to discuss the modifications for the signs. We went over the draft modification, which showed the existing monument sign and the existing signage on the building. And then also the additional signs that would be on the north side of the building and five signs over the bays on the north side of the building. There were some questions that were asked that we would give to the solicitor as this was rewritten. Counsel Dusset moved to recommend approval of the draft modification to the special permit for Minor Group as amended. The motion was seconded and the vote carried five to zero. So I have in my report the details that this applicant had liked, would like to have this done as quickly as possible. So I did reach out to the solicitor. He was able to get this completed with a couple of attempts with some changes during today's business. The council received the copies. We have a letter stating everything is in proper legal form. I would like to suspend to accept the communication and the document so that we can vote on this this evening.
Counsel Roby's asked for a motion to suspend the rules to accept the documentation from the solicitor that's put the signed special permit in proper, or the sign request in proper format as part of the special permit. So all those in favor of suspension of the rules to accept the correspondence from the solicitor? All those in favor? Opposed. Communication is accepted. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve. And the clerk has the copy. He can read the conditions. Thank you.
I will ask, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the special permit. I will ask the clerk to read the conditions.
The City Council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and the zoning ordinance of the City of Marlborough hereby grants the applicant an amendment to amend conditions one, twenty and twenty-seven of the original special permit as follows. By amending condition number one, by inserting the following statement, excuse me, following sentence at the end of the original condition. One, incorporated into this amended special permit are plans as amended, see Attachment A. By amending condition number twenty, by inserting the following paragraphs at the end of the original condition. Number twenty, existing signage. Existing street signage currently erected on the subject property is a monument-type sign that is consistent in size, layout, and design as is other existing signage on Route 85. The existing sign on Route 85 shall be replaced with the name Minneke. The additional existing Automax signage shall also be merely replaced with the name Minneke Service Center on the front of the building and shall meet the lighting criteria as set forth in the special permit. New signage upon granting of this amendment, there will be new additional signage of similar construction consistent with the existing signage currently on the building on the side of the front left corner of the building facing Route 85 and five new signs over the five service bays. All signage at the subject location shall comply with the existing City of Marlborough sign ordinance without variance and shall be shown on the building plan. By amending condition number twenty-seven, by inserting the following paragraph at the end of the original condition. Twenty-seven, all plans, renderings, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of this amended, excuse me, as part of this amendment of the special permit application as amended during the application hearing process by the City Council and the city council's Urban Affairs Committee are here and incorporated into and become part of this amended amendment of special permit and become conditions and requirements of the same unless otherwise altered by the city council. All other conditions of the original special permit shall continue in full force and effect and are incorporated by reference as part of this decision. And in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the applicant, its successors, and/or signs at his expense shall record this special permit in the Middlesex South Registry of Ds after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing this special permit has elapsed with no appeal having been filed. And before the building permit is issued, upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the city council office, the building department, and the city solicitor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Carrigan. So the motion's been made and seconded to approve the special permit. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Cut me off, Carrigan, sorry. Counsel Orson.
Counsel Orson votes yes.
Counsel Landis.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
And Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir. The motion to approve the special permit is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Any other reports of committees? Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I jumped the gun and didn't finish my report. So I technically have one more item to report out, although it's brief. It's Order Number 21-108317, which was the request for approval of her canopy for the drive-through at Chick-fil-A 36 Apex Drive. We did begin discussion of this. There were lots of question, questions asked about the canopy. So it was, it remains in committee, and we will bring it back to have the questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Any other reports of committee? Seeing none, moving on to agenda item number twenty-two.
Order Number 21-1008303, proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 67 Finance, Section 26.1, Departmental Revolving Funds, to establish a water and sewer revolving fund and to amend the spending purposes for the Public Safety Revolving Fund. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve, and the advertising requirement has been met.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the committee, and this is an ordinance change. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second reading? Please signify. It's eleven in favor and none opposed. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled? Please signify. Eleven in favor, none opposed. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained? All those in favor? It is ordained, eleven in favor, none opposed. Is there any objection to passing the ordinance in one evening? Hearing none, the ordinance is approved. Agenda item twenty-two. Twenty-three. I like twenty-two.
Order Number 21-108304A, that no more than $350,000 shall be expended from the Parks and Recreation Revolving Fund during fiscal year 2022 unless otherwise authorized by the city council and mayor. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? The recommendation is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item twenty-four.
Order Number 21-108304B, that no more than $120,000 be expended from the Public Safety Revolving Fund during fiscal year 2022 unless otherwise authorized by the city council and mayor. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the Finance Committee for the Public Safety Fund. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item twenty-five.
Order Number 21-108304C, that no more than $70,000 shall be expended from the Council on Aging Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2022 unless otherwise authorized by the city council and mayor. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of this Finance Committee, which is to approve the Council on Aging spending limit. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Spending limit is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item twenty-six.
Order Number 21-108304D, that no more than $500,000 shall be expended from the Water and Sewer Revolving Fund during fiscal year 2022 unless otherwise authorized by the mayor, by the city council and mayor. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is to approve the Water Sewer Revolving Fund limit. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Funding limit is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. That work to do now, Tom. Agenda item twenty-seven.
Order Number 21-108305, transfer request from the Department of Public Works and Auditor totaling $2,411,912.77 to fund various accounts for the remainder of fiscal year 2021 as outlined in the transfer sheets. And the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the transfer.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is to approve the year-end transfers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Transfers approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number twenty-eight.
Order Number 21-108313, transfer request in the amount of $546,738, which moves funds from Economic Development to MEDC to fund fiscal year 2022 operations of the Marlborough Economic Development Corporation. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the transfer.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which is to approve the transfers. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed. Transfers approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number twenty-nine.
Order Number 21-108270, the appointment of Mary Joanne Araki to the License Board for a six-year term from date of council confirmation. And the recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve with a term to expire June 1st, 2022.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Personnel Committee, which is to approve. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just want to make note that the recommendation is to approve with the expiration of June 1st, 2022.
So noted. Right, that's on the, that's on the thing. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment? All in favor? Opposed? It is approved. Ten in favor, one opposed. Agenda item thirty.
Order Number 21-108271, the reappointments of Gregory Matracas and David Bouvier to the License Board for six-year terms respectively from date of council confirmation and the designation of Gregory Matracas as Chair. The recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve the reappointment of Gregory Matracas with a term to expire June 1st, 2024, and David Bouvier with a term to expire June 1st, 2026.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Personnel Committee, which is to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Again, this is just to stagger the terms. The recommendation is for Greg Matracas to have the expiration of June 1st, 2024. David Bouvier to have the expiration on June 1st, 2026.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other discussion? On the motion to approve the appointments, all those in favor? All those opposed? It is approved. Ten in favor, one opposed. Agenda item thirty-one.
Order Number 21-108315, the reappointments of the Conservation Commission of Karen Pakwin for a term to expire May 5th, 2023. John Skaren for a term to expire March 7th, 2022. And Alan White for a term to expire March 2nd, 2024. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Personnel Committee, which is to approve the three appointments. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Those appointments are approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item thirty-two.
Order Number 21-108316, the reappointments of the Parks and Recreation Commission of Robert F. Caves, William F. Dougherty Jr., and Mark A. Vidal for three years terms respectively to expire on April 2nd, 2024. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to move the recommendation of the Personnel Committee, which is to approve the three appointments to Parks and Rec. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. It is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number thirty-three.
Order Number 21-108221, proposed ordinance amendment to the Code, Chapter 270, Building and Site Development, Article 5, Fences, relative to Section 19, Permit Required in Addition to Section 24, Easements and Rights of Way. Recommendation of the Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee is to approve as amended. Action was postponed to the June 21st, 2021 city council meeting, and the advertising requirement has been met.
Counselor Tenera.[1576.26]
We're finally voting on this, great. A motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the zoning change to this ordinance, not the zoning change, the ordinance change. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the ordinance change? Counselor Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. It does not state this, but I believe the vote of the recommendation was 2 to 1, my being opposed to this, and I guess I would not like to waste a lot of time in explaining why I'm opposed, but I think it's important for the councilors to understand what they're voting on. I don't object to the fact that we are changing it for short fences around gardens, but what caught my eye was the number two part, where we are saying that you don't need a permit for a fence that is not located in the minimum front side or rear yard area as defined in Chapter 650, Attachment 2. That attachment specifies for all zoning areas their side, front, and rear yard requirements. So for most of the residential, the side yard is 10 to 25, the front's 20 to 40, and the rear is 30 to 50. So a fence that goes anywhere from the property line to within the maximum of those distances would require a permit. However, if I put a fence that was 26 feet on the sideline, 41 feet on the front line, and 50 on the rear line, I don't need a special permit. Why? What's the difference? It's a fence. It's a fence that still would have fences dug that could get disruption of gas or water pipes. I don't understand it, and I will not be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Robie. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, since this is an ordinance change, it does have to go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second reading, please signify. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries 9-2. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled? All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed? Is approved, 9-2. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained? All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed? Is approved, 9-2. Any objection to passage in one evening? Hearing none, the ordinance change is approved. Agenda item 34.
Order number 21-100-8230, proposed ordinance amendment to the City Code, Chapter 510, Sewers, Section 2D, use of public sewers as submitted by Mayor Vigent. Recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve as amended. Action postponed to the June 21st, 2021 City Council meeting, and the advertising requirement has been met.
Counselor Landis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the ordinance change. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Robie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually voting in favor of this, but I do know that when this was advertised, that there was a change from what was discussed at the committee meeting, and I wonder, I know we don't typically do this, it was advertised, but I'm not sure how many people pay attention. I know I received a call from a resident concerned about the language, I believe there was a change made to sort of help the concern. Could the change that was made be read so that the public is aware of what was advertised? Is that appropriate?